Good evening. It is 6:30. We're going to go ahead and get started. Call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to go ahead and forego the invocation and start with a pledge of allegiance. Judge McCall, would you mind leading us in that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for Citizen Commons. I'm going to check my email real quick.
Mayor, I'm not sure. Is Mr. Schmal on the line? I can't remember if he was calling in.
No, but he hasn't joined us yet. Okay. Move on to item number one, presentation discussion of the receipt of the no new revenue and voter approval tax rate calculations for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor. What I wanted to go through real quick and have Ms. Vigans provide you a PowerPoint to go over and show the different tax rate implications. A number of things have changed due to state law. And also, we are incorporating potentially a debt payment this year into this proposed budget due to the potential borrowing of certificates obligation. So I'm going to let her kind of go over those real quick. I'm sorry. Okay. You want to do that afterwards? Well, I think the first one is to distribute the appraisal rolls, certificates, calculations. I think you have copies of those. So we'll come back to that, Mayor. So we'll go to item number two real quick.
Okay. Presentation, discussion, submission of the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. Mr. Rapley?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. If I fire that up? Mayor, is that up there? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Mayor and council, I wanted to provide you the FY 2021 proposed budget, city manager proposed budget. This is the day that we submit this to you as and file it with the city secretary so we can move forward towards the adoption process. What I want to do tonight is quickly go over this presentation. The idea tonight is really to give you an overview. You will all receive a copy of the proposed budget to take with you, digest, and Tuesday night at our regular council meeting, we will adding another agenda item to discuss this proposed budget further. You will also be discussing a tax rate and setting a tax rate and determining when we'd have a hearing on the budget as well. So those will all be done Tuesday night. And so, again, I think for time and review, we'll have more questions essentially Tuesday night when we have this agenda item again. Tonight is really just to give you an overview and you all receive the budget itself. The way I've kind of organized this is given the budget overview, the personnel, and then sort of the conclusions and next steps. Sorry. Things very sensitive. What I wanted to really let you all know is in my transmittal letter, I tried to give an overview of sort of how we came about putting this proposed budget together, the staff, the time, the understanding we take into account of current economy and implications by the current pandemic, and tried to be essentially cognizant and conservative of our surroundings. And so we've tried to be very fiscally conservative how we put this budget together, both on the revenue and expenditures. For this actually, for this proposed budget, it's, we have a balance transparent. And the idea is that this seeks a roadmap for next year's planning and spending for the 2021 and addresses future capital needs in the intent of moving forward with the certificates obligations and doing street and drainage work. Basic services are maintained at current levels, adequately funded. Reserves, again, are close or above the six months, which helps protect for future certain, a city of future uncertainties. The revenue is established for all levels. Again, we use the historical data. We use, try to the five-year average and look intensely at the department's line items to see what has been spent. And of course, we were taking into account the current pandemic and its impact on the economy. The department program costs are budgeted, again, reasonable. Parallels, to a certain extent, for the services the city of Castle Hills provides. And the unassigned fund balance, obviously, for emergencies, one-time expenditures or capital improvements in this case. Some of the general fund highlights, obviously, this encompasses all personnel here. All expenditures related to personnel are essentially our services, police, fire, public works, administration. The proposed general fund revenue totals the $6,942,549, which is slightly down, I think about 1% or 2% lower, I believe, from last year because we were at about $7,640,000, somewhere around there. So it's a slightly smaller budget this year. This is obviously based, as I mentioned, the possibility of the city council moving forward with the certificates obligation. The MNO approval rate, right now, we have it 0.47 per 100 valuation. This proposed budget also includes an INS for debt rate, which would be if the city issued the certificate obligation to pay back the little bit over $3 million for the needed street work. And this now creates an INS, which is an interest and sinking portion of the 0.39048. This does not include a cost of living adjustment for our employees. Traditionally, there is a COLA, either 1% or 2%, which employees have attained over the last few years. And we had to program a slight increase due to our TMS employment line item. Again, the proposed budget is based on being fiscally conservative, reflects the balanced budget, especially during this public health emergency. Just some touch, I want to touch on the total taxable value for the property tax, $601,534,300. MNO will bring in the $3,611,000. And the INS debt, again, if we issue the certificates, will be paid for the street portion only. And then the average taxable value, $339,229, for 1 cent, is $3397. Last year, I believe, it was $3197, so it's about a $2 increase. This right here is a summary of our revenues here. Court income, permit inspections, capital transfer, sanitation, obviously, ad valorem, sales use, franchise, and others. You know, again, in respect to income, we've been looking at, especially this year, at some decreases across the board in certain revenue areas, court permitting, some sales tax to a certain extent, even though that's remained stable. We lost out on some franchise fee due to state law. And, you know, sanitation has still been running below the actual cost of it for what revenue we receive. The sales and use tax right there is a combination. And we budgeted, again, $1,100,000, which was the same as last year. So we're essentially trying to remain steady and not projecting any increase. We're optimistic and hopeful that things would rebound, and that would obviously give us additional revenue. But we're trying to stay conservative based on the times we're in. This real quick is just a graph that kind of outlines the percentage of revenue that we have here for the city of Castle Hills. Obviously, ad valorem is the largest part in combination with the sales and use tax. I wanted to highlight some capital expenses. The future radios for fire, $10,000 for a rescue truck, $25,000 set aside for a fire vehicle, $50,000 set aside for future public works vehicles, $15,000 for SBA gear for firefighters. And then, as we've been doing the last two years, we've set aside $16,800 for a continual replacement of the firefighter bunker gear that we have. And then our current platform truck, this is the next payment that is due in this budget year, plus the interest. Right here, again, is a graph that shows our expenses by departments. Police at 37 and Fire Department 27, and then a breakdown of our other departments by expenditures. Real quick, I wanted to go into the areas of our streets and drainage funds. You know, as we talked about prioritizing, you know, the projects within our CIP and identifying funding options for the much-needed street repairs, street maintenance, drainage, utility supplement are all available for future infrastructure. You know, revenue for these are generated from multiple funds, being street maintenance, digital billboards. And again, as I listed, possible issuing certificates obligation. And then, street maintenance here for the tax, these are the ending fund balances. Obviously, you can see we have a zero balance that we would count for next year unless we did a reimbursement as part of the Banyan Glen Tower. So my goal Tuesday night is to go a little bit more into depth on how that would work in the reimbursement and what other projects we can do since we have basically at zero for the supplemental street due to the Banyan project. Also, some other projects identified, Mimosa Cremaria, this is the one where it's almost essentially engineered. I think we're at 80% engineered on this one. This, again, would come through the reimbursement of Banyan. I believe the total project's about $1 million for construction. And then I also listed additional street maintenance because if we were to be reimbursed, we would be doing a vast more amount of streets for maintenance that were in our street maintenance program, which identified 32 streets, and roughly, we've only done about 10 or 11 right now. We also want to put on the list West Avenue, Jackson Keller West Avenue, right in front of HEB. We really want to get that done this year for a million overlay because it's in pretty bad shape. Under the capital replacements, what we have here is the contingency fund, major equipment vehicles purchases. That would have an ending balance of $331,000. And then, under the seed, the Community Investment Infrastructure and Economic Development Program, $371,000. This would be the ending balance after we programmed in $30,000 for the development of a long-term plan to address our street, excuse me, our long-term facility needs. This would allow us to do the master plan and study and fund this moving forward to address those long-term facility needs and future improvements. So that would be a one-time expenditure out of the seed to address the necessary study to do that. Workstation upgrade, $45,000. This is where we do our replacement of PCs, desktops, and laptops. So we are projected to do some expenditures within this year's replacement and purchasing of laptops for some employees. This right here, again, I wanted to come back. This is the budget overview as far as the expenditures, again, balancing out at $6,942,000. And you can see, obviously, from the administration down to our capital expenses, police 2.6 and fire 1.9 being the largest from that standpoint. This quickly is our org chart, same one we've used. So you, as council, have an idea of our organizational chart that's in our budget every year and how our structure works. Real quick, under personal highlights in the proposed budget, as I mentioned, we have not included a cost of living adjustment for our employees. We do not have any plans or in this proposed budget for new or no additional personnel. Slight increase to TMRS. And then, right now, we're working on our health insurance rate. And right now, in this proposed budget, we've projected an extra 10% increase in there right now. We're hoping it comes in a little bit below that. Next steps here, as I mentioned, August 11th, on Tuesday night's regular meeting, y'all discuss a tax rate, take a record vote, schedule a public hearing. Then we will publish that tax rate on August 19th. First reading of the proposed budget, as indicated on our budget calendar. That should be, I'm sorry, September 8th. And then, on September 15th, we will adopt the budget and levy a tax rate. Real quick, I wanted to find out if you have any questions. And so, as we do this again on Tuesday night, I can come back and hopefully have answers for you. Thank you, council. And what I'd like to also mention is, real quick, is, you know, we got these calculations from the tax office at 416 yesterday. So, you know, between myself, Ms. Vigans, you know, and our department directors, police chief, Johnny and Jim and Rick, this has been a sort of monumental effort to try to make sure that we balance this budget. We're on projection for expenditures and revenues, and we're still maintaining our service from that standpoint. So I want to give a thanks to all of them. Because at the end of the day, we were scrambling to put this together, waiting for the tax office. And then, again, we had a balanced budget, and then we had to get back with them about the calculation on the street portion to pay that in. So that impacted our balance again. And so we kind of started over to a certain extent. But late today, we got it balanced and ready for you to present. So I want to thank staff and everybody who's been involved because I obviously can't do it by myself.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Paul?
Mr. Paul, could you turn your microphone on?
Please. Thank you.
Sorry, I keep forgetting I'm talking to other people also. On that last sheet above, questions, you have...
Yes, Mr. Schmal.
I'm getting there. On the second item, you have published notice of 2018 tax proposed tax rate. Is it something I'm not aware of, or is that just a typo?
It's too, yeah, so it's just, it's off, sorry.
That's all right. Just wanted you to know I was paying attention.
It's correct on the budget calendar, Mr. Paul. And if, at this time, what I'd like to do is have Ms. Vigans really go over the tax rate implications and the changes to state law. Yes, yes, sir. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow here, Ryan. Just a couple of questions, please. Remember a couple of weeks ago when y'all first introduced us to the potential revenue for 2021? You were projecting a loss in revenue based on the COVID business, if I recall, it's almost $500,000. Have you all changed your tune about that, your opinion about that, or?
I think so, because if you look at the spreadsheet there, we have projected endings. So we're optimistic as far as certain areas of court and permitting and other revenue kind of rebounding based on where we're at through June. Ms. Vigans does those projections, and that's why you can see on the spreadsheet there has June 30th. So we're able to project out to the year end to see that we are a little bit in better shape from that standpoint. So.
Thank you.
And again, this also impacts departmental savings. So we have salary savings, line item savings potentially from here till the end of the year that would impact and reduce that deficit.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Also, the department said, department heads put together a very nice presentation of, you know, the state of the department and really what they would like, if they had a wish list, this is what we'd like to see. Did any of that make it into the budget?
Yes, as far as the capital expenses. And if you look in there where we have listed a capital expense, that takes care of the one, that would involve a one-time transfer from the fund balance. And that actually involves some items Rick needed, as well as what the Chief Lodwig needed as well, from that standpoint.
So some of that's in there?
There are some things in there that, like Chief Lodwig presented, that I'm working with him, that we could probably actually procure this year. I think essentially the extractor, I want to go ahead and purchase that now because I think we can get reimbursed through the COVID, through the cares.
Oh, okay.
And there might be a couple of things. You know, we expended $30,000 in the seed for, you know, the court offices and the conference room. But, and the chief is working on some contractors to do the living quarters. So if I can move forward and get the living quarters over there done and put that into the reimbursement, I'm going to do that first. And so that takes care of some of his list and wish list. And I think there's a couple others that are out there. This obviously doesn't include, I know Chief Ledwig presented the idea of certification pay for our firefighters. This doesn't capture, the proposed budget doesn't capture that. I think ultimately, if this council would like to see some other items in there, based on this balanced budget, we'd have to look at how we'd find other revenue and potentially implications, again, from the tax rate to create more revenue. If we wanted to see a COLA and possibly the certification for the fire chief, for the fire department itself. So, but it does capture some items that have been requested.
Okay, quick, and just one more, I'm sorry. Is the budget, do you have the budget in there, fix those facility things in the firehouse? The bricks separating from the stucco, the 93...
Yeah, that's all going to be, the chief's already working on that. We're already, that's already in the process of being done.
Okay.
So, the idea is that I wanted to move forward quickly, if we can, to adjust those living quarters, like the chief had. And, you know, as a result of COVID and reducing that exposure between our firefighters when they're on call would be, I think, greatly increased or decrease the exposure. But I think we'd have a favorable chance of getting that reimbursed through the expenditures through the county.
Mr. Gregory?
Ryan, is this budget at all predicated on the fact that we're going to have a vaccine next year?
No, sir. I mean, again, we're trying to be optimistic, but somewhat conservative on our projections of revenue, you know? And hopefully that maybe first of the year, things do rebound, but again...
I ask that because the sales and the beverage tax and this and the other. We've closed down bars, closed down, and a lot of restaurants are selling it. I don't see much of a decrease in the budget. You have a proposal for next year for the beverage of $5,700?
Which is a decrease.
And that's a decrease.
But the actual sales tax, we remain the same and hope that the projections are in line because we're right now at a, we're pretty stable. We've only lost a certain percentage. And we're hoping that July numbers come above last year's projections, which I think recently the state actually said, had mentioned the tax reporting's coming out that way. But, again, last year, we projected to be 6% or 7% over. You know, we're trying to be optimistic. If you look at the June 30th, we're around $629,000. So if we stay on that pace, we will surpass the 1.1 million. As Ms. Vigans had mentioned in an earlier presentation this year, we'd gotten extra funds through an audit through the controller's office, so that has helped infuse that as well. But, again, I'm trying to be conservative to, and optimistic that we will maintain the same sales tax. But I did not take into account a vaccine because I'm not a...
I have to admit, I am surprised that the ad valorem tax revenue is higher than last year. And they were, wasn't there 10 times number of protests this year than there were last year, and that didn't affect us at all?
To a certain extent, it has. But I, Ms. Vigans...
But you still see an increase in the ad valorem taxes?
Mr. Gregory, if I may, as a real estate investor, property values have gone up substantially. Even though people are protesting, they're dialing you back, but it's still an increase over last year's numbers, which I saw with all my properties. They're not going to take it back to below what last year was. And Chief Siemens is kind of nodding his head because his other head is a Realtor. So hopefully that sheds some light on the situation.
And again, there is an impact to the protests, and Ms. Vigans can go through that because right now, this essentially got us about $64,000 in new revenue, which the protests were a little lower, might have allowed for a different revenue to come in based on the appraisals.
You've doubled the amount we expected to get from towing? More than doubled?
That actually, and we can go through that Tuesday night with Chief Siemens. But he's working on an ILA with Leon Valley on an impound lot over at their property, where we would get a little more funding per automobile than the towing lot that we currently are. And that's actually a decent projection. He's, that's conservative because I think he's projecting a little bit more than that.
This was brought forward in council, Mr. Gregory. You might have missed that meeting.
And the passport acceptance office is expected to have no revenue for next year.
We budgeted $30,000 there, projected.
You're grabbing on the right line.
And we've actually, you know, we're doing passports again by appointment.
Yeah, $30,000.
So we hope to see an increase this year. And hopefully, Mr. Gregory, there is a vaccine or some type of treatment that would allow for, you know, for the economy to be backward, should be.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll let Ms. Vigans go over the tax rate implications. Give me one second, Mr. Rapley. Mr. May, did you have a question? Sorry.
Couldn't the body cameras be paid by the Crime Control Prevention District? Because they have a huge surplus over there. They have a huge surplus over there. There is a huge working surplus.
And, thank you. And, Mr. Gregory, to touch on that a little bit more, you know, the way we approach this is we are trying to be a little conservative based on economic factors, right? And we're, you know, essentially, the department's budgets are pretty tight across the board, line items. I mean, there are some little things you can adjust with fuel, IT, but for the most part, they need these line items to operate. And, you know, I sat down with everybody in their departments, and over the last few days, especially Chief Siemens, we were able to cut some areas within line items to try to get to a balanced point. But it is a shoestring budget, essentially, but we are trying to be conservative because, you know, I don't have a crystal ball for next year, especially with what is going on with this pandemic. And a lot of cities, again, talking to a lot of cities, they're in the same boat where they're trying to balance a budget, trying to estimate revenues, and trying to make sure that they continue to provide certain services at certain levels.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Any further questions, council? Okay, we're going to go back to item number one.
Mayor, real quick, I want her to touch on a couple of things on the budget.
Okay. Yes, sir. Ms. Vigans?
Sorry. I just want to kind of go quickly so you know what you have in your hands, what you're looking at when you go home, things of that nature, real quick. So we did print the big sheet, start on ledger. That is the general fund budget. It matches the same one that's in here, but it's bigger, so you can see. We also included some notes, information on the side. You could also jot down your own notes, but also kind of gives you a little bit of information of what might have changed in those line items. There are a couple line items that we created due to the capital asset policy we adopted a few months ago. So we have some new lines. Those lines have been moved to the respective departments versus being in the AD fund, I mean, to the AD department in the back of the general fund because it's hard to see what belongs to the departments when it's like that. So there are some changes like that. When it comes to your budget book, so when it comes to your budget book, you'll see when you have your first part, you have a cover page that is required by Texas Local Government Code that explains the, with a proposed budget, what the revenue difference is on property tax. It's a calculation they require. It's a little odd and strange to read, so we have that information there. The first section, you're going to have your general fund. Well, actually, you'll have your budget message from him. You'll have your tax calendar, your org chart, your fund flow charts and your fund structure. But you also have your general fund, and then following your general fund are all your special revenue funds. And they all have recap pages on them. If there's any expenses, you'll see those little notes that blow them. So we did not print those in ledger just because most of them either have very minimal expenses or some of them are statutory, you know, they can only be spent on certain items for your court technology, court security, et cetera. items for your court technology, court security, et cetera. So if you need them bigger, we can certainly do that. And then in the very back, you're gonna find your property tax calculation worksheets. So when we get to the next agenda item in just a second, um, we're gonna go over more. I have a PowerPoint presentation, but part of the new Senate bill requires the worksheets to be included in your final budget document as well in the appendix. So they're in here. We, we hand those out in usually anyhow during, at the budget process, but this new bill requires them to be in the budget document. So kinda wanted to kinda just kinda give you an understanding of what you have in your hands. So if you have any questions Tuesday, you can jot them down and try to answer them. And, oh, and then also on the projected ending, I have read, you'll see the projected ending column, and we are still looking about three hundred thirty two thousand. You know, again, every month it kind of changes, but we think we're gonna see that much decrease in revenue. I went through and did, um, on all the salaries on all those line items. We've had vacancies in pretty much every single department, it seems like. So I went through and calculated what it would be, you know, at the end of the year, where we are, because we're exactly six months. So that helped savings wise. So, and then we had a couple of other lineup changes. So for the proposed, um, excuse me, for the current year, the projected, I've, I've balanced us because you're required to show projected in your, in your budget presentation. So, you know, again, every month it keeps changing, but I, I still see a decrease currently in your current revenues. And we're hopeful next year things are about, you know, rebound, I, yeah. So, you know, that's on budget, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fegans. I will digress back to item number one, a presentation discussion of the receipt of no new revenue and voter approval tax rate calculations for the city of Castle Hills. Uh, Mr. Rappley?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I wanna have Ms. Fegans go through the tax rate implications, uh, within your proposed budget. You have a copy of, of the calculations there from the tax office, um, as again, we're supposed to put those in the proposed budget now. And then due to the, to state law changes and how the tax rate works, I wanted her to go through that. Again, we'll probably again have a presentation with further questions Tuesday night because we will be discussing this, uh, and deciding an actual tax rate to have a hearing as part of this adoption process. Fegans?
So you, you have, uh, we handed out a presentation. Unfortunately, we don't have it for on the screen, but, um, I'm gonna go through this too quickly, but, uh, just wanna kinda give you a timeline overview. Uh, the tax off, tax assessor collector requested information based on rate calculations, and we provided that on June twenty first. July twenty seventh is when we received the certified appraisals. That comes from the appraisal district. August fifth, the, when we receive the rate calculations, as Mr. Rappley mentioned, we got those yesterday very late in the afternoon. Then we're again, August sixth, where calculations submitted to the governing body for review as was required now. We're looking at August seventh, I mean, excuse me, August eleventh, discuss the tax rate, and if the proposed tax rate will exceed the no new revenue rate, take a record vote and schedule a public hearing. And then just a kinda reminder on September fifteenth, adopt the budget and tax rate limit. So just wanna do historical overview. The city up until two thousand nineteen last year had not changed the tax rate since two thousand ten. Uh, in September last year, the city was required to adopt the effective rate of point four eight zero six one nine. Also, citizens approved by election in May of two thousand seventeen, the limitation of increased ad lorm taxes for residents, resident homesteads on persons who are disabled or over sixty, sixty five, and that's called considered tax raise or tax ceiling. Currently, we have six hundred and seventeen single family homes frozen out of the thousand five hundred and forty. So it's just a little history. Uh, the next one is just a property tax, just to show you a graph of your property tax rate. Uh, did you, this one, did you not get a copy, sir?
No, sir.
So we're on the graph right now. So again, that just shows you, just, it's just sometimes nice to see graphs and see them in a different perspective. Some more information, just ta, uh, tax rates composed of two components of maintenance and operation, which is considered your M and O. That's what's in your general fund and interest in sinking, which would be in your debt service fund. The city currently does not have any debt obligations paid with property tax, so currently you don't have an INS fund. Ever, so all of your tax money is out of your M and O. The tax assessor collector said, said that y'all have not had an INS for twenty one years. You have issued debt in a, in a few of those years, but you didn't put it with your INS. Just can be done. Uh, the city has currently begun the process to issue certificate obligations to pay for street and drainage capital projects. The street portion is to come from tax and will create an INS rate. So you're looking to issue more debt than what will be in your property tax, because a portion of it will be paid from drainage funds. And this is the fun part. So Senate Bill two, also known as the Property Tax Reform and Transparency Act of two thousand nineteen occurred last year, goes into effect for this season. A lot of, it's a lot. So it's, this is a very brief information. If you feel the need or wanna learn more, the comptroller, if you go to their website and put in truth and taxation, they have pages and pages of information to understand some of this, I'm gonna really go briefly over because I'm still learning like everybody else. I've been to a couple of training sessions, um, even Mark Schnall, last night, we had a conversation about something and he read some more. He goes, oh, that is what that says. And it's, I think it's still a com, uh, what you gonna say, with like a work in progress, even though the state passed the bill, everybody's still learning it. So anyhow, the act says amends the property tax appraisal requirements, the tax rate setting process and notice requirements. So required notices that we have to publish on our homepage, in the paper and now on CAD as well, which is that one page that now is real short for the last several years. You'll see in the paper that shows your tax rates and what you're proposing in hearing. That's also now, has to be on CAD on their side, and we have to log into a portal and put the information in. And also the, the tax office used to prepare the notice that goes to the paper. They will assist us this year, but we're gonna have to get it into the paper on our own. So we have to send it to the paper. So a few changes. So we have also the, under the current law, it eliminated two public hearings on the tax rate. Now there's just one. So if we are at, required to have that public hearing, it's just one now. So now I'm gonna move into the other pieces. So the, the next thing is the no new revenue tax rate. That's the new word that is being used for what's formerly known as the effective rate. So I'm trying to say it over and over in my brain because I, I still spit out effective rate, I'm like, no, no new revenue. Um, it is generally equal to the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property taxes revenue for, for the same properties in both tax years. So really that definition hasn't changed, it's just a new name. So that, that one's easy. Just have to remember no new revenue. The next one is voter approval tax rate. The voter approval tax rate, previously known as the rollback tax rate, provides a taxing unit with about the same amount of tax revenue it spent the previous year for day to day operations, plus an extra three point five percent. Previously, it was eight percent. It is, this is created for operations insufficient funds to pay for debt in the coming year. So your debt piece is always kind of outside of that. This is on your M and O side. Voter approval tax rate is the no new revenue, maintenance and operation tax rate times the one point zero three five, plus the current debt, plus the unused increment rate. So we'll talk about unused increment, increment rate in a moment. The next lovely rate is the de minimis rate. The de minimis rate was also created under the SB two, and it only applies to certain taxing units. So not all taxing units have a de minimis rate. It's thirty thousand population or less, and then some other types of districts. Castle Hills qualifies, so you have a de minimis rate. What they consider the de minimis rate is equal to the sum of a taxing unit's no new revenue, maintenance and operation rate. The rate that when applies to a taxing current total value will impose an amount of taxes equal to another five hundred thousand and a taxing unit's current debt rate. Yeah, so, yes, it's, so it's your current no new revenue rate, and then it allows you to put another five hundred thousand in revenue. I don't, I don't know on the legislation where these things, yeah. And then again, and they're taxing the current debt rate, so your debt rate's never affected. They're always added on. So tax increase elections for taxing units that calculate the de minimis rate depend on whether the adopted tax rate is greater than or less than the voter approval rate and the de minimis rate. Being all that said, so the comptroller has this handy to anyone in their truth and taxation. And so basically what de minimis is, it says which taxing units can calculate the de minimis rate. And so we are one of those, population of, um, less than thirty thousand, so we can do it as a yes. And what that last statement really means is that there's, the adopted tax rate, if you got to that point, your adopted tax rate is below the voter approval tax rate, no election required. If the adopted tracks, tax rate is above the voter approval tax rate, but below the de minimis rate, voters may petition for an election. So that's kind of what the rollback used to do. If you went over your rollback, you could petition for an election. Not the old way. No, sir. If you went over the rollback, you had to have a petition, petition had to be proven up, and then, um, you would take it to the voters then. And then, so then the next, um, way is above voter approval tax rate, taxing unit does not calculate de minimis rate, your election required. So if you're completely above the, uh, voter, voter approval tax rate and you're a larger entity, then you automatically have election rate, election required. You stop, you don't pass go, you're gonna call an election. But this is where the de minimis little, de minimis comes in. If you're above the voter approval tax rate and above the de minimis, elections required. But if you're below that, that goes back to that may election, but may have one. So if you're above the voter and above de minimis, again, no pass go, you're gonna call election. You would, so again, if you, it's that weird little new de minimis we have to look at. So I know it's clear as mud. And so again, we'll go on to the next one. Unless you have questions on that real quick before I, I know, I, it seems more complicated than it already was, and I'm, that wasn't part of the legislation, so.
Mr. Paul, your microphone?
Put in perspective, to go back to the tax rate we were before we inadvertently left it, does that cause for a vote?
We'll, we'll look at that here in just a second. We will, yes. Uh, so again, because then we mentioned this, we're going to the unused increment rate. We mentioned that a minute, uh, just a moment ago. That's also created with the SB two. So a taxing unit that did not use all of its revenue growth may bank that unused growth as long as a taxing unit averaged below three point five percent of the voter approval rate over three years. Since this is the first year in the calculation for twenty twenty tax year, the unused increment rate is zero and will not apply this year. So if tax rate wise, you're looking at all your different rates, you went with the no new revenue, because that's typically, not everywhere, sometimes it gets flipped, just like in the old days, but, so if you were at the no new revenue rate, you kept that rate, that's what you proposed, and that's what you adopted, the difference between it and the voter, you get to kind of bank some of that and then use that in future years. Again, a lot of if, then's, so. To be able to go over the three point five percent increase, then you could increase more to, for your tax rate, to determine what your tax rate, what rate you would have to go to the voters with. So you might actually be able to go over your voter rate of threshold of, which is at the three point five. Yeah, in a sense, yes. It just gives you a, yeah. Interesting to see later on in years how that works for cities. You know? No, no. No, it just gives you, yeah. Okay. So the next page is analysis of tax rate, which is gonna kinda answer some of your questions you've already asked about the tax rate. So this analysis shows you in the very first column, it's what we're currently at. It shows your budget, um, assessment, what was used to calculate revenue, the freeze amount, because your freeze is not in your calculation, because it, we're given that amount that we're gonna collect. And then your total tax rate for the current year is point four eight zero six one nine. And that brings your levy of three million five hundred and forty seven thirty eight. So the next column says current rate, we're gonna just skip that second column momentarily, because that's, that was, is if we just had stayed at that rate, but we're not gonna really discuss that right now. So the next column is no new revenue rate, which again, was the effective rate. And you'll see our current, uh, total taxable assessed value is six hundred and one million five hundred and forty three thousand three hundred. Currently, the freeze that we're gonna add back in is eight hundred and two, eight hundred and thirty eight. So with the no new revenue rate, which has been calculated at point four five eight nine zero zero, that would bring in three million five hundred and sixty three thousand three hundred and twenty in taxes for both your M and O and your future INS, you're, we're talking about issuing for the, the COs for the street portion. So that includes both rates. That's, so that would be your total tax rate if you went with this no new revenue. It gets a little wonky and, and I, that's because this is your first year, you don't have debt currently, so this kinda makes that calculation look very odd. So as you go down, you see you have to remove your debt service portion, which would be two hundred and thirty four, eight hundred and ninety one. And then your portion from debts, for debt service out of your tax freeze, which is sixty eight thousand three hundred and fourteen. And.
Ms. Fegans, can you clarify what less debt service from tax freeze means?
Yes. So your debt, you're up above, you have your debt, excuse me, up above, you have your actual freeze is eight hundred and two thousand eight hundred and thirty eight. When you have an INS, an M and O and INS, you have two rates, and your portion of your debt, excuse me, a portion of your freeze is split by the proportion of your INS and M and O rate. Because the, the frozen properties don't go up, but they still pay a portion, so their tax is now split in that proportion amount. So those two amounts come out of your total, and so every, it'll change. And the reason it's, it's, one thing, it's not in your calculation as well. As people know, you don't have to pay your taxes when you're frozen. Most people don't do that. It's not recommended, and, but there is that option. When you issue debt, you have to calculate a hun, you're gonna bring in your, your debt payment a hundred percent. So also, when we go, we can go through the, the calculation that they, uh, that they provided us. They're showing us at a ninety seven percent, seventy seven point six, I believe it was, rate, collection rate. So also when they figure the INS rate. So also, when they figure the INS rate, they make sure that you're gonna bring in enough to pay a hundred percent, excluding your freeze people, even though they're gonna be paying. So it gets a little strange. You can, and so what will happen, most cities that have a freeze, you will collect more in your debt service. And it'll sit there in that debt service. When you do your rate calculation again, that following year, there's a spot on the calculation and, and within it that says amounts to be used from other sources. You can say, okay, we collected an extra twenty thousand. You can put that towards that debt service payment that's due now, and that reduces it, and it helps your tax rate. You, you know, you don't always have to do that. Sometimes people wait, you know, like especially with y'all, a brand new one. You know, this is your first time. You don't have to remove that immediately. So you could do it maybe the following year to make sure you bring in enough money. And then it's, it, whatever is in your debt service when you collect more, because again, we also have a ninety seven percent rate of collection, but you're likely to collect more than that. Whatever is in your INS, whenever it comes, whether you're end of paying your debt or you're paying future debt, that money can only be used to pay debt service. And it can be paid on future debt service. Doesn't have to be just this particular CMO.
So Ms. Fiegans, Mr. Joyce pointed out that we have almost forty percent in that frozen tax rate, so that's to say there would likely be a substantial amount extra at the end of the year. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be probably about that, yeah, it'd be that sixty eight. The, the sixty eight thousand, that's how much you're gonna expect to be in there over.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it is strange. And I've been, I've seen some cities that didn't understand, they just built that up, you know, they didn't think to spend it. And five years later, they went, oh, my God. And they were able to help reduce their debt and issued additional debt, because they had that extra. But that's the way the calculations work, and that's how you have to do it. So you can't say, well, we're gonna get that, so we don't want the debt rate to be that. It doesn't work that way.
Can that money be segregated and put into account and rolled over?
Yes, it goes, it'll create a new fund. You already have, what, seventeen other funds? You'll create its own fund, and it's kept separate.
Is there a limitation on what you can do with that money?
Can only be used to pay debt service.
Only use, thank you.
Any, and any debt service, but it can only be used for debt service.
Thank you, Ms. Fiegans.
Okay, so, so now that was the voter, I mean, excuse me, we're at the no new revenue. So when you get down, you look there, you have revenue difference, it's a negative two hundred and eighty six, nine hundred twenty two. So i- if for some reason council said that's the rate we're gonna adopt, you're gonna lose that in your general fund. You're gonna have to come up with another two hundred and eighty six, nine hundred twenty two out of general fund. Again, it's that weirdness that it's your first year of issuing debt. You haven't issued debt, so the rate that that looks at is your current rate. Next year, it, that would be your current date rate plus your debt. So you wouldn't see that large number like that. One can hope anyway. There's lots of things going on with COVID, and things could change other ways, but. So I know that seems a little odd, but, so now we're gonna look over here at the next column, which is your voter approval rate. So again, we have the assessed value, you have the freeze. So the voter approval rate is point five one six zero three eight. And that would be a total of MNO and INS of three million nine hundred seven thousand and thirty dollars. You would, if you take out what you're gonna pay towards your debt service, which is two hundred and thirty four thousand eight hundred, that number's not changing in the calculation. And the, now, because the, again, we're doing that MNO and INS on the freeze piece is, is based on percentage of those pieces, it slightly changes. It's gonna be, when we come out, sixty thousand seven hundred fifty. So that puts your general fund MNO at three million six hundred eleven, three hundred eighty nine, which gives you an additional revenue in the general fund of sixty four thousand three hundred fifty two, which earlier, Mr. Gregory asked about that, that's where that comes from. Then we have the de minimis rate that we just discussed. It's a strange bird as well. So again, same, following the same thing. You come down and you've got your total MNO and INS of four million three hundred nine, eight hundred nine, nine hundred ninety eight. You take out your debt portion, and then your tax freeze. And you have, so th- this one is flipped because this, the, the difference is going towards the MNO. So that's why the tax freeze is lower, the fifty three thousand seven hundred seventy. So then that would make the total available to the general fund of four million twenty one thousand three hundred thirty seven, which would give you an additional revenue of four hundred seventy four thousand three hundred. So you can see that rate is over your voter rate. But because of the size of your city, you actually could go with any rate between that voter and de minimis. That you could propose a rate anywhere in between there. And they would have to make a petition, and the petition would have to go, be approved, and then it would go to election if the petition comes to fruition, and there's enough voters, and it qualifies with all those pieces.
Ms. Fiegans, can you clarify what that rate would be that would trigger the, the citizens could bring forward a petition?
Anything over the point five one six zero three eight.
So anything over the voter approval rate?
Yes. But because your de minimis is over the voter one, it doesn't automatically require an election.
So it's only if there's a petition? Thank you, Ms. Fiegans.
Very confusing. Now, there are some timeline things, and I'm not a hundred percent sure. There may be some ta- timing wise that we may have, our current calendar might not work with that. So just beware, there are a few other little tweaks. So then, your because there are some, they have notice requirements. And I have, I, so there may be some, based on the requirements, notice, we'd have to look if our calendar might have to be altered slightly. So then the very last column is what we have here is proposed. So in our, the current budget that you've been submitted by the city manager, we do have in there a total tax rate proposed of point five one six zero three eight, which is your voter approval. So you would be safe, that would be, and you would have to have a hearing, normal, normal tax hearing that you normally have, which you've already put on the calendar. That hasn't really changed. You'll, so on Tuesday, you would discuss the tax rate, and if you were to pick with that one, we would move on forward with the required tax hearing. Yeah, yeah, and again, as we mentioned, when we're discussed, when we with, with the voter, which is the same rate, that does include the three million, three, three point three million for street improvements. So that's in that rate. The next page, I just kind of included some information about your certified property values. And those also, you receive that. This is your certified packet on your tax rate, I mean, not, excuse me, on your appraisals. And you can kind of go through that if you'd like. So it has certified, so the certified value, grant totals, including your frees, are eight hundred and ten million, two hundred sixty seven thousand, four hundred forty one. We mentioned a minute ago, you're, of those, of that amount, what's approved is seven hundred and three million, six hundred twenty eight, nine hundred fifty three. And then, and that includes the frees, what's under review is eighty nine million, two hundred seventy seven thousand, one hundred and four, which last year, you were approximately twenty three million. So pretty significant. It was pretty significant four weeks ago, and I had, Ryan kept saying, well, can we figure some things? And I know people were asking him, like, there's, it's just too flexible right now. And it was, at that point, I think it was a hundred and twenty three million, I believe. So it dropped significant, but it's still a lot that's under review. So then, the next page is on a penny cent in tax increase, in case anyone's interested in that information. So any, one cent increase in the tax rate brings in approximately sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty four dollars. So then, I just have here, again, those same rates that were on the other page, I just put them, they're a little bit showing you your current tax rate, your no new revenue, voter approval, de minimis. And then I have it split on the proposed for MNO and INS. Clear as mud, I'm sure.
Question? So based on these numbers, then we lost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars by dropping it two cents last year?
Yeah, actually, yeah, at least that, it's probably, probably more, I could probably go figure. And the problem is, it's not just that you, you lost that as well as the way the calculation works. So it, it hurt you double. It hurt you what you lost last year and this new calculation.
Right.
Essentially, when we, as Ms. Fiegans mentioned, we had to do a publication, and we had to say what we were using the new revenue for, and, and I had plugged in street improvements, so, which was to do the, the maintenance of our program. So, yeah, that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars off at the time.
As I understand it too, that once we go back, assuming we go back to the point five one or something, again, those that are under a freeze don't go back up.
That is correct, they are frozen.
Jesus.
Yep, they're frozen. Now, again, that, they're, what they pay is split. So they pay their portion of debt, but their rate, rate does not, or their amount does not grow up on the rate. Kind of discounted, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Fiegans. Do we have any other questions, counsel? Mr. Gregory?
On, on the freeze, it, well, it's no, it's there, it's what your amount to the city, the amount that you pay in property tax. So when the rate went down, then it gets recalculated to, so that you go down that amount. You'll go down, you'll go down on that, on for the city side as well, yeah. But if you, if the tax rate goes down, you also get to go down again. You'll not, you won't go back up, yeah. Now, that's only for city, I mean, you, you know, your value, when it comes to the others, county and cit, uh, excuse me, the school district, that, that's something different. So you may have increases there for other ways, but. Yep. And, and then, yeah, and then it gets re, if they're sixty five, then it gets recalculated, frozen for them at that rate, at that point. And it's, again, well, Tuesday is when you will discuss the tax rate and propose a tax rate. That starts the clock, clock ticking, and that's in our current calendar. So we can, if you have questions, you know, you come up with things, please shoot them to Ryan, because again, this is kind of all changing and evolving, and like I said, even Mr. Schnall was like, oh, wait a minute. So even the attorneys, even TMLs, some of the stuff that they've put out, I mean, you read and you go, oh, wait a minute, that's not really what it said, it's this. If, so we go back to yeah, so if, if you, what triggers an election because of your de minimis rate is if you were to go over the de minimis rate, which is point five eight three. So if you were to go over the point five eight, point five eight three zero two seven, an immediate election, yes. Well, I mean, excuse me, if you go, if, if you go over the de minimis rate, then that's an automatic election. But if you, if you go somewhere in between the voter approval and the de minimis, it's only if a petition comes forth that is valid, would it go to election? Yeah, we have
Counsel, do we have any further questions? Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh, Mr. Rappley, I don't imagine that, uh,
I know, Mayor, I just wanted to mention, as, as again, Ms. Fiegans did, we will have this agenda item Tuesday night. Part of my goal was to have a placeholder again as a presentation discussion on the proposed budget. What I wanted to bring forward were some items, as Mr. Joyce said, that may not have been on the wish list. Give you some things that are not included in this proposed budget, because if down the road, council decides to adjust the tax rate or want to take funds out of the general reserve fund to, to expend for certain things for the departments, that's a choice you all can make as council. So I'll give you those options on Tuesday night as well as part of the presentation. I will also be elaborating a little bit more on our sanitation fund at that point too, to talk about a, a plan as well, and on the revenue and expenditure side. And again, I, I wanted to stress that we will have an agenda item, as Ms. Fiegans said, about the tax rate for you all to decide what we are moving forward with. So I hope you have more questions Tuesday night for, after you've digested this book, so. But again, I want to thank staff, Ms. Fiegans, everybody. You know, our leadership team, you know, between both chiefs, Mr. Harada, Mr. Zamiron over there, you know, we spent a lot of time on this to try to get to a point where we think we have a very good budget based on a number of circumstances that are attributing to trying to put this together, you know, from the economy versus, um, you know, try to be optimistic, as Mr. Gregory said, for a vaccine that would rebound a number of things, hopefully, in the future. Again, I thank you for your time, appreciate it. Mayor, you have, sorry, do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, that's what we have planned for Tuesday night, and there was no action tonight. It was just a presentation discussion, and if council has any more questions, please let me know. I'd be happy between now and Tuesday to get you the answers you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Announcements by Mayor and Council, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Paul, Mr. May, Mr. Joyce, Mr. Gregory. Okay, I have no comments. Everybody have a good evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So I'll move, Mr. May, Mr. Joyce on favor? It is seven thirty eight, everybody have a good evening.